Okay, good evening. Thank you all for coming out tonight. I'd like to call the Sugar Land City Council meeting to order of September 16th, 2025. Councilmember Suzanne Watley has our invocation.
Thank you, Mayor. Will everyone rise and join me, please? Thank you. Father God, we come before you tonight with grateful hearts for the privilege of serving the people of this city. We thank you for our dedicated staff who have worked tirelessly to prepare this budget and guide us, ensuring that we are good stewards of the resources entrusted to us. Lord, as we consider important decisions regarding our budget and tax rate tonight, please grant us discernment. Help us to weigh carefully the needs of our growing community with the responsibility of being mindful of everyone's financial circumstances. May our actions reflect not only fiscal responsibility but also compassion, justice, and care for all who call this city home. We ask your blessings upon our mayor, our council, and our staff, especially in this time, this season of transition with new leaders at our table. Knit us together in purpose even when our perspectives differ so that our work may always serve the greater good of the people we represent. Finally, guide us to remain humble, thoughtful, and steadfast in our commitment to do what is right for our city. May our decisions tonight and the days ahead strengthen the trust of those we serve and bring always honor to you. We continue to ask you watch over those who serve faithfully, answering the call to service, our first responders, caregivers, and those selfishly dedicated to enriching the lives of others. This we pray in your holy name. Amen.
Amen. So now to lead us in our pledges, we have two students from Stephen F. Austin High School. So come on down. We have Rosemeen Munumakal, and she achieved the distinguished honor of placing first chair in her voice section at the Texas Music Educators Association District Auditions. And we have Alany Beltran Truheyo, and her goal is to graduate with a degree in international business and marketing. So Rosemeen, start us off with a pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you so much for joining us tonight. You may be seated. Okay, now we have three recognitions tonight. Our first recognition is for National Food Safety Awareness Month. So I would like to have, let me go over here, invite Nicole Guevara to come down. She is the Assistant Director of Neighborhood Services, and I'd also like to invite the food inspection staff that are with us in the audience. So Nicole, could you tell us a little bit about National Food Safety Awareness Month?
Sure. Sure. Hi, everyone. So Food Safety Awareness Month is actually a really great time to remember that even the smallest of habits can have a huge impact on public health. The CDC estimates that over this next year, one in six Americans will get food poisoning. That's almost 48 million people. So while most of us only need a little bit of time, some saltine crackers, and lots of fluid to get over food poisoning, that's not always the case for everyone. So we have to keep in mind the children, our senior citizens, as well as our vulnerable populations here in the city. So that's why food safety practices like hand washing and keeping cold food cold and cooking food all the way through is really important. We have an excellent group of inspectors here with us today with over 60 years of combined experience working in the field. They work really, really hard to inspect all of our restaurants and hotels and hospitals and schools and daycares and nursing homes and gas stations and temporary events, our festivals, our events. They work really, really hard to ensure that everything that we eat here when we come visit the city is safe and we go home healthy. So thank you very much, Mayor.
Well, thank you for all that you do for us. Okay, so now I'd like to present a proclamation. Whereas the city of Sugar Land proudly recognizes September as National Food Safety Awareness Month, acknowledging the essential role of food safety in protecting the health and well-being of our community, and whereas the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention estimates that 48 million Americans become ill, 128,000 are hospitalized, and 3,000 die annually due to foodborne illnesses, many of which are preventable through proper food handling, sanitation, and storage products. And whereas the city of Sugar Land's Food Inspection Division works year-round to protect residents by conducting inspections of restaurants, grocery stores, schools, and other food establishments while promoting compliance with public health regulations, and whereas through routine inspections, public education, and outreach, the city promotes critical practices such as maintaining safe cooking temperatures, preventing cross-contamination, and ensuring proper food storage to minimize risk and increase awareness. So again, thank you all so much for what you do. And council, come down for a photo. Thank you all again. Next on the agenda is the Government Finance Officers Association Distinguished Budget Award for FY25. So Shaleh Stedman, Director of Budget, and staff members Mike Martinez, Crosby Q, and Lee Su, come on down. Shaleh, I'm going to pass the mic to you and let you tell us about the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award, and hopefully you'll tell us how many years that the city has won this.
The Government Finance Officer Association, or GFOWA, was established, the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award program, in 1984 to encourage state and local governments to go beyond the minimum requirements of state law in preparing their annual budget. The award promotes budget documents that serve not only as policy document but also as a financial plan, an operations guide, and a communications device. Each submission is independently reviewed by at least three finance professionals using national recognized guidelines. And since its launch, the award has become the most prestigious recognition in municipal budgeting. The city of Sugar Land first received the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award in 1996 and has earned 29 consecutive years. This achievement reflects the city's strong commitment to transparency, accountability, and clarity, as well as the incredible hard work and dedication of the budget team who's here with me today, and all city staff who contribute to preparing the budget each year.
Thank you all. Wow. 29 consecutive years of winning this award. That's really, really impressive. Counsel, come on down. Join us for a photo here, and I'd like to present this plaque to all of you. Here, okay. Why don't you move over in the center? Congratulations again. Thank you. Okay, our next recognition is of the RoboSapiens Robotics Team First Tech Challenge Achievements. And I see you all here. So I'd like to first call up Coach Rajiv Mehta. And so I'd like to call up the team members: Kavish Aravmeta, Neel Hablikar, Aryan, Aravgarg, Manav, Pranav, Mahir, Nidlan, Duchan. So Coach, I'm going to pass the mic to you and let you tell us all about this.
Good evening, Mayor, members of your office, and our wonderful Sugar Land community. On behalf of RoboSapiens Robotics Team as a coach, I want to express our deepest gratitude for incredible recognition you have given to us for our achievement during 2024-2025 robotics season. This honor is just not the celebration of our team's hard work, but it's a powerful affirmation of the value of the STEM education and the youth innovation in our city. The boys have poured countless hours into designing, building, and programming the robot that compete at the highest levels, which is world level. But beyond the trophies and competitions, what truly matters is the growth mindset, teamwork, problem-solving skills they have developed along the way. The team has spent more than 500 hours sharing their knowledge and passion of STEM with communities both locally and globally. Through outreach efforts spanning in Houston, India, Dubai, Australia, and beyond, our students have inspired and educated peers across four countries, proving that the learning and leadership know no borders. Mayor, your support and recognition today reinforce the importance of empowering youth through STEM, and your commitment to education and innovation sends a powerful message that Sugar Land is a city where young minds are encouraged to dream big, explore boldly, and give back generously. Thank you for being a champion of our future leaders. We are proud to represent Sugar Land, and we look forward for new season continuing our journey with your encouragement and support. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for representing Sugar Land. Now I'd like to present you with a proclamation. Whereas the RoboSapiens have represented Sugar Land with distinction, advancing to the Northeastern Oklahoma Robotics Invitational Premier Competition on June 13th through 14th, 2025, after excelling at the Texas East Regional Championship. And whereas the team has earned top honors this season, including the Inspire Award at the Houston Regional Championship, the highest recognition in First Tech Challenge, and an impressive second-place overall finish at the NEO Invitational. And whereas beyond competition, the RoboSapiens have completed more than 50 outreach events, inspiring over 3,000 people locally and around the world, while also engaging civic leaders to raise awareness for robotics and STEM education. And whereas their achievements reflect the innovation, leadership, and spirit of service that define the city of Sugar Land and stand as an inspiration to young people everywhere. Congratulations again. Counsel, would you like to come down for a photo with these young men? Okay, yes. Okay, next, Agenda Item Six, Public Comment. At this time, I will open public comment. Citizens who wish to address the city council, please come for action items on the agenda for consideration. We'll have three minutes to speak. Please come forward as I call your name. And as a reminder, disruptions of public meetings are prohibited. Our first speaker is Joe Quinn, and he is speaking on Agenda Item 1X.
Is this the right place? Okay, good. The budget. I understand that we pay our city manager way more than city managers in other comparable cities. We could save some of our budget if we reduce that salary to what is competitive with other cities of our size in Texas. Budget item number two. We, I understand that we're going to pay $2.5 million to promote a bunch of soccer games in Houston next year. I mean, that's a significant amount of money for each taxpayer. So if we could eliminate that, we would save each taxpayer a huge amount of money. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. The next speaker is Kathy Shaw, speaking on Agenda Item Number Nine.
Thank you for the opportunity for me to speak here. I have a question for Honorable Mayor. Looking at the budget, have you asked Budget Office to run a scenario with a 5% or a 7% cut in maintenance and operation budget? I am retired from Chevron, and I remember running a lot of scenarios for my managers to save for dollars. And with today's proliferation of AI tools, it's a lot easier to find the efficiency and save some money. So question is, have you asked? Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Our next speaker is Ashok Dasgupta, speaking on Agenda Item 9A.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I want to quote the father of our friend Gary sitting out there, and he mentioned that it's easy to raise taxes, but it's difficult or it's hard work to keep it the same. So I want to ask that you don't raise taxes, but you have to please do the hard work and not to raise it. Instead of raising taxes, the city must rein in spending, provide stronger oversight of the city manager, and manage debt more responsibly. I stand before you and urge that course of action because the numbers are troubling. Payroll is climbing. Salaries and benefits were $76 million in 2023 and are projected to be $104 million in 2026, nearly 37% higher in just three years. Budgets are swelling. General Fund has grown 35% since 2022, and the maintenance and operations budget is up almost 40%. Staffing has surged. Since 2023, the city has added 69 new employees, mind you, 54 of them not in police, fire, or emergency services, but in bureaucratic positions to make a big government for which we, the taxpayers, will have to pay. Debt is heavier, too. Each Each resident's share of bonded debt will rise 26% in one year from 2017 to, in this year, to 2545 in 2026. And this comes as our population shrinks. Sugarland has lost nearly 9,000 residents, about 7% since 2022. Bigger payrolls, bigger budgets, more debt, and big government.
30 seconds.
This is what we have, and with fewer residents. That's not sustainable. Sugarland deserves fiscal discipline, not higher taxes. Please put the residents first. We voted you in here. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you, Ashok. Our next speaker is Anna Lakotis, and she is speaking on 9A.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. We, the people, elected our city representatives to do their jobs, to look after us, to look after our residents, and we have residents, which 20% of which are senior citizens in Sugarland. Most senior citizens live on a fixed income. We have families in Sugarland. We have inflation hitting all over the country, 2.9% just last month. I just learned, courtesy of our annual property, excuse me, property homeowner's insurance, that the state of Texas approved a 30% to 40% increase in homeowner's insurance policies. To a family like mine, who is a single-income family, to a math professor who works for a state university, he did not get a pay raise this year, and that's quite all right. We understand the economy. But to have a $2,000 increase on just a homeowner's policy, and then to sit and think about the budget that the city is proposing by, excuse me, and no offense, an unelected official who has made over $110,000 pay increase in the past two years, is absolutely astronomical to ask us taxpayers to accept. The steward of the city budget is the city manager. Respectfully, the city manager's decisions when it has come to the city's financial interests has been poor. I give an F rating, and I'll tell you why. The growth of the expenses has skyrocketed. There is policies and projects like $25 million giveaways to developers for demolishing a building that we, the taxpayers, don't even own. These are bad decisions. There's decisions to have economic development committees and economic redevelopment committees, each of which cost millions of dollars. We're paying for that. So I really invoke and implore that each of you elected officials find the moral courage to think about what is right and to stand up to your city manager, who is getting a $13,000 a year car allowance in addition to a $400,000 a year salary with benefits. Stand up to him and demand him to reduce the budget, just like Harris County did, just like the city of Houston did, just like Fulcher did, to avoid a tax increase on the residents who don't deserve financial mismanagement. We ask you to do your jobs. Thank you.
Thank you, Anna. Our next speaker is Barbara Willie, who's speaking on Agenda Item 9B.
Good evening. My name is Barbara Willie. I'm here tonight speaking as a private citizen, so wearing my private citizen cap. I'm here to encourage adoption of the annual budget as required to implement the capital projects voted in the bond election and to adopt the tax rate necessary for their implementation. I've watched over the years, some of these projects that are currently on your list go through not one, not two, but three, up to three bond elections. These projects have been on the list across multiple mayors, multiple city managers, multiple city management staff, different boards with different people on those boards, and different voters. When we vote for capital projects to be implemented, but then we don't implement in a timely manner, inflation increases the cost of those before they can be built, and then those projects sit or languish and don't get done. Several years ago, I had opportunities to participate in Sugarland 101, where I went through a project prioritization exercise of the previous year's projects. And at the end of that, I calculated 1.8% of the projects on the list as being discretionary. Many of them, these projects were not vanity projects of anybody. They were things that we needed to protect our citizens from the next storm and safety-related things. A lot of them were, I considered to be necessary, and even though even the 1.8 discretionary was shade in a public park and in our weather, I'm not even sure that I really considered that a need, I mean, a want versus a need. So I encourage you to implement the projects as planned for many, many years, and let us get them done.
30 seconds.
Once and for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. Our next speaker is Jesse Matthew, speaking on Agenda Item 9A and B.
Good evening. As I stated a few weeks ago, I did not vote for the bond. I do not want a tax increase. That is my only special interest. And I'm also speaking on behalf of the seniors and the older population in the city. Everything's becoming unaffordable. Grocery prices are up. Even the school tax is going up. So please consider trimming the budget to find the money. That's all I'm asking. I think that we all voted for you guys, and you are here to represent all of our interests. So please look into the budget. There have been many people who've brought up many of the concerns regarding salaries. As a healthcare professional, sometimes we get 2% raise. So, and that's it. And so you guys really, and we save lives. So please really look at the budget, see where you can cut down on salaries. That's all we're asking. And please try to avoid the whole one cent raise in our taxes. A few weeks ago, Ms. Watley brought up how she couldn't find any credits for seniors. Well, this vote is where you can choose to, you know, help the seniors. So based on this vote, we'll see what your choice is. Either you're on the side of the seniors and elderly population, or you're not, because you have a choice to do that. Trying to think what else. About one minute. Yeah, I mean, pretty much that's all we're asking. Look at the budget, see where we can trim costs, because some of the salaries are excessive. Everything is going up. School tax. Several people are in HOA, have HOA assessment fees going up. You know, people are struggling right now.
30 seconds.
So please look. The only tax that didn't go up is apparently the Fortman County tax, but our appraisal values are going to go up. So that's kind of like moot. That'll, you know. So please just really look into finding ways to save money for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Jesse. Our next speaker is Sumita Ghosh.
Sumita Ghosh, longtime Sugarland resident. Again, love my city, love all the employees here, love all the services. And just as a point of clarification, I vehemently agree with Barbara, my neighbor, that, you know, we're not asking for anything to do with public safety in terms of personnel. I was found out that public safety only increased by five people. And so, again, which I'm actually like, that's too little. But I think that, you know, we need to vernacular here. We need to doge our city and our city budget. We need to seriously think about not public safety, not capital improvements, not bond-approved things. I think Barbara's concern was really the animal shelter. And yeah, we're not saying do away with the animal shelter. It's long overdue. But there are concerns about the animal shelter. Why is there an increase to up to 19 people in the animal shelter when they're actually decreasing intake? So I really don't know what, you know, not to target someone, but someone whose job it is to look at the budget, why there aren't, like, why we as citizens know more about the budget and where there could be reductions, and none of that is coming from the person whose job it is. And so I just, as a citizen, I'm really disappointed that this board has failed to be good stewards of our taxpayer dollars and to really scrutinize every penny. And, you know, some people, again, may think, oh, it's just, you know, just a couple of, you know, $300 here or there. But we know, as we've heard our seniors speak, this is like real, real money to them. I mean, when they're having to, you know, do away with things, take second jobs. I have a senior citizen mom, and, you know, she just had to pay $300 because there is that, all that stuff going on where it's hard to find landscapers. And there's other realities that are impinging in the world we live in, and we can't refuse to live in our little world that's like, oh, yeah, everything's great. This is not MAGA land. This is reality. We have our own budgets. We know what the realities and the facts are, and we need to acknowledge that when we look at our budget. And I just don't see any fiscal responsibility or anyone being a good, well, a majority of the folks, I hope by tonight's vote, will show me that I'm wrong, that we do have sensible, good stewards of our taxpayer dollars. And all we're asking is just to look at it and not increase the tax rate and not increase the budget unnecessarily. So thank you.
Thank you, Sumita. Our next speaker is Manika Sethi. Is that right?
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers, and fellow residents. My name is Manika Sethia, and I'm a small business owner here in Sugarland. I run a real estate brokerage. I want to begin by acknowledging the effort it takes to balance a budget for a city like ours. I know these decisions are not easy, but as both a resident of Sugarland and a real estate professional, I must respectfully oppose the proposed property tax increase. For more than 15 years, I have been deeply involved in real estate investing, development, and sales through my brokerage. I understand what families value when choosing a place to live. Hence, my perspective tonight comes from practical, real-world experience, not just theory. That's why I want to address the September 9th presentation from Budget Director Ms. Tedman, which compared Sugarland property tax rate to Richmond, Pearland, Missouri City, Houston, KT, Rosenberg, and Fulcher. The property tax rate was compared to seven other cities. The claim was that our rate is lower. While technically true, on paper, it does not provide the complete picture. With respect, I would like to share four critical points that the presentation did not reflect. First, Sugarland's home values are much higher than in most of these cities. So even with a lower rate, our residents already pay more in property taxes per household than families in Richmond, Rosenberg, KT, or Houston. In other words, the city collects more per household here despite the lower rate. Second, of all the cities compared, Sugarland is the only one with a declining population. Our neighbors are growing and attracting new families while we are shrinking. Hence, a declining population should be a signal to manage the staff more carefully, not to increase the burden on existing residents. Third, and this is very critical, there's the issue of who pays for the growth. In Fulcher and KT, developers cover much of the cost of infrastructure through impact fees, muds, and private investment. While here in Sugarland, it is the opposite. Taxpayers are paying developers. The floor or Lake Point Green redevelopment alone includes $24 million in incentives for demo remediation and infrastructure. That is money directly out of residents' pockets. And finally, nearly 76% of our general fund, that is over $104 million, is allocated to salaries and benefits, the largest share among the seven or eight cities compared. That leaves very little flexibility.
Thank you for your comments. I appreciate it, Manika. Our next speaker is Anon Pinto, and he is speaking on Agenda Item 9A.
Good evening, Mayor and City Councilmembers. I'm here again, probably for the fourth time, making my public comments on the budget. As always, I thank the employees, the first responders, and everything for making the city safe and the number three city in the ranking. I've spent a lot of time, effort, even though I'm not paid, to do this, to analyze the data, compiling the data, and providing all of you multiple emails. My first email was on August 31st, listing down 17 suggestions and 15 recommendations on how we can manage costs, but I did not receive a response. The only response I got was from Councilman Stewart, saying that he will send it over to the city manager, but there was silence. Again, I sent multiple emails showing a trend analysis of salaries and benefits, of the headcount, both public safety and non-public safety, the general fund, the operating budget, the capital budget, as well as our debt, and the tax rates over the last five years from financial year 2022 up to 2026. But again, there was silence, no response, until last Tuesday, when I had a conversation with Mayor Carroll and explained some of the details why I was saying this. And I also had a one-hour conversation with Brian, the Assistant City Manager, and Shalay as well, on a couple of the items. I asked for a headcount in the budget for FY26, but I was not provided that. I'm not sure why, but that is not transparency, because there's no accountability, there's no responsibility. Various people have said salaries have increased and everything like that. My analysis has shown in other cities, that range is from 55% to 60%, not 70%, not 76% as it is in Sugarland of the general fund. I don't see any KPIs in the budget on how things are measured. Last week, it was said that there was a 30% reduction, but when you do the numbers, it was an actual dollar 2.6 million of the 4.7 million that was shown. That's only less than 1% of your 2025 budget of $317 million.
30 seconds.
So it shows that there doesn't appear to be a concerted effort to look at our MNO expenses. As somebody said, we voted for the bonds. Yes, we did. We are not opposed to the increase in tax, to the interest and sinking fund, but we are opposed to the increase in tax for MNO. I provided options to the mayor.
10 seconds.
On September 10th, as well as the City Councilmembers, to reduce the taxes, but I haven't heard. So please restore trust, and as Suzanne said, apply what you said in your.
Thank you, Andy. Have you received any other forms filled out? Okay, well, at this at this time, public comments is now closed. Agenda Item 7, Consent Agenda. All consent agenda items listed are considered to be routine by the City Council and will be enacted by one motion unless a council member wishes to pull an item off of consent.
Mayor, can you hear me?
Yeah. Sorry, I had made a suggestion.
What now?
Yeah, I had actually made a suggestion for a change in the minutes. There was something wrongly recorded in the minutes of the last meeting, so I don't know if that was done or not. So basically, I will explain what the change was.
Yes.
In the last meeting, we approved the date of the budget hearing to be today, and that was the motion. But what was recorded in the meeting, that the budget has been approved. And I requested that to be changed to that the meeting date has been approved to be 16th.
Yes, that has been changed.
It has been changed?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Betcher, did I hear you say something?
Yes, I wanted to pull D for a question.
Okay. Would any other council member like to pull an item? Okay. Councilmember Watley, would you like to amend your motion to exclude Item D?
Thank you, Mayor. Let's go ahead and vote on items excluding D. Make a motion to approve all except D.
Did we have a second earlier? Okay, a second by Vondahar. Let's vote at this time. Okay, well, we can always take a hand vote. Okay, I think Jim is still having issues. So we'll go ahead and take a hand vote. All those in favor, raise your hand. Okay, and so it passes 7-0. Okay, I'm hearing some noise. Okay, so, Item D, appointments to the First Colony District. But we're hearing interference from somewhere.
Yeah, it's probably my microphone.
Oh, okay. Okay, so, so Councilmember Betcher's pulled off Item D, appointments to the First Colony District Board of Directors. And so, what is your question about that?
I just noticed it was, you know, the first time we're seeing it. Are these all just reappointments of the existing members of the board, or anything changing here?
I'm not aware of any changes. Yeah. Does that answer your question?
Did you hear the question?
Yes, I'm not aware of any changes. Does any staff have any other comments for that? Okay, so, no, we're not aware of any changes, Rob.
Okay, now it's reappointment, and then this is a council board that we reappoint?
Yes.
Okay. I'm going to move forward. Motion to approve.
Okay, we've got a motion to approve by Betcher. Okay, second by Miller. We'll do a hand vote. All those in favor. Okay, and it passes 7-0. Next item is 8A, Second Consideration. Consideration of an action on City of Sugar Land Ordinance Number 2382, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Sugar Land, Texas, adopting a revised fee schedule by mending Chapter 2, Article 5, Division 4, fees for various city services, Chapter 5, Article 8, Division 3, rates and charges, Sections 5246 to 5265, and Chapter 5, Article 8, Division 12, municipal drainage utility system, Section 5413 of the Code of Ordinances, and other matters related thereto. We have Shalay Stedman, Director of Budget.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This first item I present tonight as part of our annual budget process is the second reading of Ordinance 2382 on fees, rates, and charges. We had a public hearing and first reading on September 2nd of 2025, and no speakers at that public hearing. Normally, the second reading would be on the consent agenda. However, because there were four changes since the first reading, I'm bringing this item back forward. As covered in much greater detail in the first reading, the fee schedule includes several key adjustments. Our CPI adjustment of 3.71% for most fees, a 3% base water and wastewater rate increase, a $1.09 for solid waste contractual increase, as well as a $1 emergency disaster recovery fee, and adjustments to permits and parks recreation for greater cost recovery with costs associated with those fees. We had four changes since the first reading. First, related to our generator permits. After reviewing the new state regulations, it was confirmed that the city may still require permits for generators larger, for generators 50 kilowatts and larger. This requirement was originally removed in the first reading, but has now been reinstated. Second, the airport department has updated the fee structure to include higher adjustments for both transactional and volume discounts based on prior year's purchase activity. Third, a new fee has been added to recover staff and legal costs associated with economic development, revealing applications for incentives on tax abatement. And fourth, due to recent changes under Senate Bill 1008, cities no longer have the authority to collect fees on alcoholic beverage licenses, and so it has been removed. So with that, I will... Any clarifying questions for staff?
Any questions?
Staff, sorry.
Is there a motion? Okay, motion approved by Councilmember Single.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Vondahar. Okay, we'll take a hand vote then. All those in favor? Okay, and it passes 7-0. Okay, so, next item is the Budget 9A, First and Final Consideration. Consideration of an action on City of Sugar Land Ordinance Number 2388, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Sugar Land, Texas, adopting the annual budget for the fiscal year beginning October 1st, 2025, and ending September 30th, 2026, appropriating the sums as set forth therein, adopting the Capital Improvements Program 2026 to 2030, and adopting a compensation plan.
Thank you. And tonight, council is being asked to approve Ordinance Number 238, which formally adopts the city's budget, the five-year capital improvement program, and the compensation plans. But first, we'll talk briefly about some of the requirements and the processes we've gone through this far. City charter requires that the budget be adopted no later than September 25th, which will be satisfied by your action tonight. Additionally, Texas Local Government Code states that the governing body of the municipality may levy taxes only in accordance with the budget. Therefore, the adoption of the tax rate is a separate agenda item and will be adopted after the adoption of the budget. In terms of timeline and development, the budget filing was on July 15th, and was followed by a series of workshops in August, which were open to the public. Additionally, public hearings were held on various components of the budget process, with the final step being the first and final reading of the ordinance today. As I mentioned previously, a series of workshops were held in August during the workshop. During these workshops, we dived deep into the budget and the five-year capital improvement program, with four workshops totaling around 12 hours with 15 presenters and over 455 slides of information. These videos have been posted and are available for viewing. Additionally, residents had the opportunity to participate in public hearings in September. On September 2nd, we had the fee ordinance, the PIT assessment, and the proposed budget. The proposed budget had 10 speakers. And then last week, on September 9th, we had the proposed tax rate. I'd like to highlight our high-level budget priorities for the fiscal year 26 budget. The city remains committed to providing the best public safety, which is reflected in the budget through step increases in salary, funding for paramedic school, and a new lease for cardiac monitors, to ensure that our teams can respond to every call with the best training and tools. We've also made significant strides in redevelopment in fiscal year 25, and this budget continues that momentum with funding for Lake Point, the Imperial Historic District, and the Great Homes Program. On the compensation side, the fiscal year 26 budget includes a 3% merit increase for non-public safety employees and a 3.5 structural adjustment to keep pay competitive and maintain our championship workforce. Finally, a key priority in this budget process has been our operational efficiencies, with staff identifying $4.7 million in ongoing reductions, along with a strong commitment to continue to drive efficiencies into the future. While I will not cover every fund tonight, I did want to pause and highlight our general operating fund. We are adopting the fiscal year 26 budget, but it's important to remember that decisions made tonight will shape the future. The five-year forecast helps us see those long-term impacts and plan accordingly. The proposed budget is structurally sound. However, there is limited capacity for new incentives and unforeseen costs. Any ability to take on new priorities will come from the staff's ongoing commitment to efficiencies and responsible financial management. The five-year capital improvement program outlines $766 million in planned projects from fiscal year 26 through fiscal year 30, with funding provided through voter-approved general obligation bonds, economic development corporations, airport funds, and utility revenues, to name a few. The fiscal year 26 budget includes $183.9 million in capital projects scheduled for this year, while years two through five serve as a planning tool to guide long-term priorities and future funding needs. So, in summary, the fiscal year 26 budget includes $331 million in operating funds and $183.9 million for capital projects for a total adopted budget of $514.9 million. The proposed budget is compliant with the city's council's adopted financial management policy statements. It ensures that we may remain structurally balanced, maintain adequate reserves, and are responsibly managing debt. The budget demonstrates the city's continued commitment to responsible stewardship of taxpayer dollars while delivering the highest level of services to our community. So with that, staff recommends the approval of Ordinance Number 2388, adopting the fiscal year 26 budget, the fiscal year 26 through 30 capital improvement program, and the fiscal year 26 compensation plans. Questions for staff?
Okay, so before we discuss this agenda item, I want to take a moment to share my perspective and outline the motion I will be bringing forward in the next Agenda Item 9B. As Mayor, I made a commitment to listen carefully to our residents throughout this process, and I have done that. I've listened during public hearings and public comment through emails and phone calls, in one-on-one meetings, and through numerous conversations out in the community. I want to thank everyone who took the time to share their thoughts, concerns, and ideas with me. I've spent considerable time digging into the budget, line by line, to ensure we're being responsible stewards of public funds. I also want to note that the city's overall property revaluation this year was not as significant as in previous years. Just like a homeowner or a small business owner would do in similar circumstances, we need to be mindful and tighten our belts where we can. At the same time, I remain fully committed to delivering the critical projects that voters have approved, including investments in public safety, our new animal shelter, which will break ground in June, road and sidewalk improvements, and essential drainage upgrades. These are not optional, they're necessary, and the community has placed its trust in us to deliver them. With all of that in mind, I want to let my colleagues know that I will be making a motion during the next agenda item to propose a tax rate increase of 0.5265 cents specifically for debt service while holding the MNO rate flat. This approach reflects both fiscal discipline and our commitment to honoring voter-approved investments in our city's future. So, Mike, about how much would the budget be reduced by holding the MNO rate flat?
Yeah, Mayor, based on current estimates, it'd be just shy of $1 million. My recommendation, if the council goes that way, is it doesn't, you know, we've had the workshops and we've had a lot of meetings on this, and so probably does not make sense to try to figure out where to remove $1 million tonight. So if the council elects a tax rate at the rate you mentioned, I would recommend coming back in October with a recommendation to amend the budget as opposed to trying to determine where that would be tonight. That'd be my recommendation to the council.
Okay, thank you. So, yeah, we do need an approved motion tonight, and I will approve a budget tonight, and I will make that motion. And then in Item 9B, if the tax rate is not, the approved tax rate is not sufficient to fund the motion, the budget, the city manager will bring back a amended budget for council to vote on in the future. Is there any particular language that I need to use to make the motion? But anyway, I will make a motion to approve Ordinance Number 2388, adopting the annual budget for the fiscal year beginning October 1st, 2025, and ending September 30th, 2026, and appropriating the sums as set forth therein, as well as the capital improvements program for 2026 to 2030, and adopting a compensation plan. Discussion by council members.
Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Watley, yes.
I'd like to second your motion. I know we have further discussion, but thank you. I'd like to second before our motion, our discussions.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Single?
Yeah, so I have actually two points to cover. Thank you for giving me a chance. So first point, I would say that in the last meeting, Councilman, Councilwoman Watley had asked about a question, what can be done about seniors? And possibly, it was understood that not much can be done by the council. So I would like to clarify on that part is the exemption for senior is in two parts. One part is the age, which is above 65. That's what council cannot do anything because that's mandated by the state. But the amount of expect exemption, which is dollar, is defined by the city council. Currently, that's a $70,000. There is no limit by the Texas state or any law whether that can be increased or not. So in City of Rosenberg, for example, that exemption is $85,000. So if the council decided in time, then that could have been increased to give a tax break to the seniors. Now, I understand that to do that, you need to approve that by 30th of June, because you need to submit it to the Fort Bend County for the calculation of the tax rate and all. So my recommendation to the council, that after this budget cycle is over, for the next budget cycle, we seriously consider increasing the tax exemption for the seniors from 70 to maybe 85,000 or 90,000. That will be a separate agenda item, which I will request after the meeting, but before 30th of June, so the council can decide on that. Is that correct, which I said, Madam?
Yes, sir. There's nothing you can do to adopt for this budget cycle, but if you adopt before June 29th next year, you can apply that to the next budget cycle.
Thank you.
Councilmember Watley, I'm sorry, we finished?
So I had a second point to make. Sorry about that. So, second, I just had a question on the, when you filed the budget on, in July 15th, and the budget booklet we got, my question is about the general fund and the total expenditure. That was at $137 million. And I understand, as compared to the adopted budget, that number was 134, and it came because of the incentive to the Lake Point, which we gave $2.6 million. So 137 was understood, but I noticed now in the final budget, that number has increased to 141. So I want to know that 4 million increase is, is it because some unforeseen expenditure which came up? Or are we making a provision for future expense? which came up, or are we making a provision for future expense?
Okay, I just want to clarify, it wasn't 4 million, it was 400,000. And it, we talked about it in the workshop, the main increase was additional information received on the STEP program for public safety. And then also, we received the information for our life insurance liability, I'm sorry, I'm blanking on the word, but information that we received after we filed. So all of it was information received after the point. And then the third big piece in there is for public safety grants. We received additional grants, and so that increases our expenditure ability, but it also increased our revenues as well. So it zeros out on that piece.
Sorry, just want to follow. So here, I'm not talking about 26 expense, I'm talking of 25. So in the two months, we had $4 million additional expense?
Okay, sorry, I misunderstood your question.
No, so I'm asking for 2025. In 15th July, our expenditure was 137, and now it is stated as 141. What I just want to make sure that we are not building a buffer for future.
No, so what actually happened was when we did the projections, we received more information as we got along, and also the revenues wasn't included as well. So that's, they basically balanced each other out. It was just when we pulled the data, we had a missing piece, and we did not go over the budget for fiscal year 25. That was just the projection side.
I think possibly I'll follow up with you, but this will not affect the budget cycle. I need to follow up with you to just understand correctly how that works.
So, yeah, it was just on the projections.
Later time, okay. Councilmember Watley?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, Mayor, I'd like to thank you for making that motion, and I want to thank staff. I know this is going to cause you to scramble, and I, but I appreciate the fact that while you're scrambling to get us back on budget after this change, we are clear that this is not going to affect public safety, and it's not going to affect our debt service to the capital improvement projects we're looking at. I think what we're looking at, as our city manager said, is less than $1 million, and we can probably find that in other ways, that we're talking about subsidizing and sales tax revenue, things like that. So while we're looking at this, I want to make sure that everyone knows we heard you, and we're looking at ways to subsidize this and make clear that we're doing this because we realize it's needing to be done, and this does not affect what we see next year because we're going to do the same thing. We're going to do some dozing, we are, more dozing, and we realize that. I think one of the things we're going to look at in our next meeting in October and at our retreat, Sanjay, it's already on the agenda, we're going to talk about senior discounts at our retreat, it's on the agenda item for us to talk about then and get done possibly, and do it at our spring retreat, because we will talk about everything we didn't talk about this year. And the reason we didn't talk about it is we didn't have a spring retreat to talk about our budget, which we normally do, because we had new council members in time, didn't allow us to do that. So forgive us, many of the things that we should have talked about, we didn't. But next year, we'll have that opportunity, and these things won't be as mishandled, and I won't say mishandled, but it, it will be done much easier next year. So I want to thank staff for putting up with us and our constituents for speaking up. Thank you.
Councilmember Vondahar?
Yeah, I think Suzanne may have mentioned this, but I just want to clarify. It's my understanding, as we've gone through this process, that this increase was something that we felt we needed to have to make sure we had a viable budget going forward, not just for this year, but for years to come. And if we don't get that full increase this year, we're pushing that off into next year. So my question is, are we now looking at the potential for a 2 cent increase next year, because we're only doing a half a cent this year? So I want to make sure that our change this year doesn't force us to do something even more onerous next year.
Well, the difference is, we're going to be reducing about $1 million from the MNO, so we're not, so that resolves that. Councilor Singal?
So, you know, so first of all, I think thanks to the team, which has done hard work, and thanks, Mayor, to you for listening to the people and what everybody has asked, and this was my proposal in the council meeting two weeks ago, that we keep the MNO as flat and do not increase, and increase the bond portion, which everybody agrees that we need to do all those bond projects. So I think that meets the expectation of the resident, and I thank you for that. Now, I had a suggestion, which I had prepared, so I will give it anyway, even though city manager will work out where to find that 1 million. In our budget, we have $500,000 kept as a contingency fund, which can be definitely eliminated because we have a contingency in terms of sales tax. Typically, we get 5 to 6 million additional sales tax, because the way we project the sales tax conservatively, rightly so, we don't put it in our budget, we are likely to get it. So I think that contingency, which is a double buffer, can be avoided. And second, I think last year, council had given a target to city manager for $1.75 million of efficiency saving, which were found during the year. So similarly, I suggest we give efficiency saving target to the city administration of half a million. So between these two half a million, we can definitely find 1 million. So to answer to your question, Jim, if we cut the expenditure, which are recurring expenditure, we are not postponing the tax increase. So by doing half cent today, will not force us to do one and a half or two cent in future, as long as we keep the check on our expenses and we don't increase our expenses. So thank you. That's what I wanted to mention in terms of the future projection of the tax. Thank you.
But it is important to have that contingency.
Mayor, I've got two questions when you get a chance.
Okay, I say contingency is important because those are things that are unplanned, that do come up from time to time, that are just not able to be budgeted. But anyway, we'll work out that in the next month. Councilmember Miller?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say how much I appreciate your motion as well, and Councilmember Watley's comments. And I also want to say how much I've enjoyed, as a new council member, getting to know the city manager and the, and the key staff members, and the hard work that they're putting in for us and for the city and for all the residents.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Betcher?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. You know, thanks to the team, Chale, you know, city manager, for putting this budget together. Obviously, it takes a lot of effort, and, you know, part of it is getting to understand what the council's policy agenda and direction even is, as you work to clarify that. And I thank the mayor for putting forward this proposal. From the standpoint of right now, running agenda item A, which is the budget, I was trying to figure out the technicality of us, you know, with the future issue of amending the tax rate, you were saying it wasn't going to fully fund the budget. What is to prevent, let's say, staff from just drawing down the reserve fund further and keeping everything the same, just collecting less tax revenue? And then secondly, what is the recommendation for voting on bud, on budget item A if we are going to amend it in the future?
Okay, Chale, do you want to answer the first question, then?
Sure, I can answer it. Yes, it is possible to draw down the fund balance. However, as I showed the five-year forecast for the general fund, we don't want to show a continuous negative net income, and that will impact our bond ratings. And so that's why it's key that we come back and amend the budget, so that we can show that we have a plan for all of those financial management policies.
And so, yeah, so Councilmember Betcher, to recap, we will approve the budget, and then if, when we get to item 9B, if the approved tax rate increase does not fully fund the approved budget, then staff will bring back an amended budget for council to vote on, which will be funded by the tax rate. Other questions? Okay, so again.
Yeah, I was going to follow up to that, Mayor.
Okay, yeah, a follow-up?
So your recommendation is, yeah, your recommendation is approving it as is? Or are you recommending approving it conditionally that they remove $1 million from the expenditures?
Well, just my recommendation is to approve as is, but then if the approved tax rate does not fully fund it, then they will have to bring back a amended budget that does, that is funded by the tax rate. Councilmember Singal?
I did not understand the proposal, as what you advisedly said. I understood that we approved the budget minus $1 million from what is proposed, that $1 million is yet to be found. We do not put where it is coming from, but what we propose is $1 million less expenditure than what is proposed.
Mike?
Yeah, Mayor, you know, the budget has tons of line items, and so it's not just as simple as saying, remove $1 million. If it, if the, yeah, we could have done that previously, but tonight, that's not something I would recommend, because it's not good financial management. So what I would recommend is you approve this budget as it is. The financial management policy statement to this council is that I need to file a budget that is a recurring in the positive, and so this budget would not be, I would come back in October with an amended budget for your, for your approval that would find the efficiencies and then codify those within the budget.
Does everyone understand? Okay, okay. Well, I'm going to call a roll call vote to approve ordinance number 2388. So Ashley, can you handle that?
When I call?
So, Mayor, point of order?
Yes, Councilmember Betcher?
Would you want to reverse, would you want to reverse the ordering and vote on item B first?
No, it doesn't make any difference. We're going to approve the budget as is, and if the tax rate should happen not to fund an amended budget, will have to be brought back.
Okay, when I call your name, please state your vote. Councilmember Vondahar?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobson?
Yes.
Councilmember Watley?
Yes.
Councilmember Singal?
Yes.
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Mayor McCutcheon?
Yes.
Councilmember Betcher?
Okay, the motion passes 7-0. Next item, 9B, first and final consideration, consideration of and action on City of Sugarland ordinance number 2387, an ordinance of the city council of the City of Sugarland, Texas, levying a property tax rate for the year 2025, and directing the tax assessor-collector to assess, account for, and distribute the property taxes as herein levied. Chale?
Thank you. This is the final step in the budget process for fiscal year 26. As a reminder, here we go. As a reminder, property tax is critical and stable funding source for the city, making about one-third of the general fund revenues. Unlike sales tax, which can fluctuate with the economy, property tax provides a predictable and consistent base to build our annual budget. Even at current levels, property tax does not fully fund public safety. It's only about 73% of the cost, so we use other revenues to fill the gap. This is the property tax timeline. So the fiscal year 26 truth and taxation process followed all required steps. Certified values were received on July 22nd, and the Fort Bend County Tax Assessor-Collector prepared the city's no-new revenue and voter approval rate. On August 19th, 2025, the city council took a record vote to post the proposed tax rate. Although the proposed rate was below the no-new revenue rate, a public hearing was held on September 9th to allow for public input. Today, council will adopt the fiscal year 26 property tax rate by record vote, with statutory language read into the record, and then the adopted tax rate will be filed with the state and county as required. And we had, like I mentioned, we had a public hearing on Tuesday, September 9th. The notice included the language as mandated by tax code with the truth and taxation rates as calculated. So with our proposed tax rate as voted on the record vote at .363210, and the no-new revenue tax rate at .367991, and the voter approval tax rate at .377063. When the voters approved the $350 million bond program, it was with the understanding that up to 5 cents would be added to the property tax rate to support repayment. In this first year, the portion of the initial penny is allocated to the maintenance and operations to help support ongoing operations. However, as we move through the five-year forecast, all of the 5 cents will be dedicated to the debt service, so this portion will go back down to debt service. This planned shift allows us to avoid tax spikes and maintain long-term financial stability while delivering these projects, voter-approved projects. So with the proposed rate, the total monthly increase is about $7.92 for an average residential tax bill. The actual impact will vary depending on the each homeowner's individual property value. The increase is made up of $4.17 just for the reevaluation, and then $2.10 for the debt service portion, and then the maintenance and operations is $1.65 a month. So with that, staff recommends the approval of the first and final reading of ordinance number 2387, the setting a tax rate of 2025, with the total being .363210, and directing the tax assessor-collector to assess, account for, and distribute the property taxes as This year, the proposed tax rate is below the no-new revenue tax rate. The vote on the ordinance setting the tax rate must be a record vote, and the majority of the governing body must vote in favor of the adoption of the tax rate. A motion to adopt the ordinance must be made in the following form. I move that the property tax be set at .36321, which is effectively a 1.2% decrease in the tax levy. So with that, clarifying questions?
So, the number which you have proposed now on the screen, that will now change based on what the mayor has just now said. That number will change 2.3588, is that correct?
It would be, yes, .358827.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, so you said it would be .358827 to maintain, to have the increase for debt service and hold MNO flat, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, well, before we have discussion, I'll go ahead and move that the property tax rate be set to .358827. Do I need to say which is effectively a decrease in the tax levy?
It would be 2.4% decrease.
Okay, which is effectively a 2.4% decrease in the tax levy. And again, this would fully accommodate the debt service and hold MNO flat, and by taking approximately $1 million out of the MNO budget, it will not require us to go to, you know, one and a half or two cents next year to move forward with our GO bond. So, Councilmember Jacobson?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, I, I would like to say something about this whole process. To say that this has been an unusual year would be a gross understatement. We have, a majority of our council are brand new. Suzanne, you and I are the only ones who have been through this budget process before. Suzanne, four times. Mayor, eight, nine?
Nine times, yes.
Me, six times. And it's, it's a cloudy and opaque process for us sometimes, and it'd be hard to imagine what it's like if you were a taxpayer watching this happen, to know exactly what's happening and why things are spent the way that they are. But what, what people don't realize is that when we have our regular springtime retreats where we talk about the budget, you might be pleasantly surprised to know that just about every year, we say to staff, no, this is how much we're willing to let you spend. Now, as a city council, we are not allowed to make specific recommendations on how we spend money. We can't say you need to cut this number of these, these particular expenses or these particular positions. We can't do that. We're a board of directors, we hire a city manager to handle that. But we have, in every one of the six years that I've been here, and I'm kind of known around here for being the guy on the finance committee, every single time, we have said no. Or if we didn't say no, we said, prove it. Tell me why you need this money. Show me where. And it hurts me personally a little bit, because a lot of discussion would lead people to believe that Suzanne, Mayor, and I, the four predecessors, your four predecessors, have been careless with the taxpayers' money, that we've been spendthrift, that we do not actually listen. And, I don't know, people are talking about senior citizens. Rob, being away, I can say that everybody up here is a senior citizen, for crying out loud, okay? So I want everybody to understand that the way it works is we tell Mike, no. We would have told Mike no a long time ago, but this has been a very, very bizarre, bizarre year. I promise you, things will get much more, we have a brand-new budget director, how long you been on the job? you been on the job? Okay?
Nine months.
So, and Mayor, I, um, I am very proud of the leadership that you're showing in this, and I would very much like to second your motion.
Thank you, thank you, Councilmember Jacobson. Uh, Councilmember Single?
Yeah, no, I would like to make a comment. So I think what Stuart said is right, that four council member are new, uh, but some of us come from a very detailed experience from the corporate world budgeting, et cetera. And we did try to speak during the budget workshop. Today, what we approved is exactly what I proposed in fourteenth of August workshop, and also in the council meeting of second of September. So I think one of the learning would also be that somehow, if we hear all the voices much in advance, so we will not need to make the change at the last minute, like we did today. So I think that would be a learning we will take forward for the next budget process, that we work through that during our workshop more collaboratively. Thank you.
Okay, so I would like to, um, amend the motion to state the new tax rate breakout. So is, um, I, yes, do you have that tax, I think it's my point two-zero-seven-one-seven, point, yeah, two-zero-seven-one-seven-two, and then, because my numbers are slightly different from yours, and then the point one-five-one-six-five-five. So, uh, amend the motion for the M and O tax rate to be flat at point two-zero-seven-one-seven-two, debt service to be increased to point one-five-one-six-five-five, for a total tax rate of point three-five-eight-eight-two-seven.
Second.
Okay, thank you. So we have a motion and a second. Do we have additional discussion from the council members? Well, I want to thank the, the budget team, Shalay and your whole team, for all of your hard work on budget, and I would like to thank the entire staff, because the entire staff, uh, you know, put the, and gave the input into providing this, so it's been a lot of hard work. And again, um, council is, uh, wants to remain responsible stewards of our public funds, and we also are committed to, I said, delivering our geo-bond projects. So with that, we will take a roll call vote.
Uh, Carol, quick question?
Oh, okay, Councilmember Betcher, yes.
Is this a vote on the amendment first, and then we vote on the main motion? Is that the routing for this?
No, we're just voting on the proposed tax rate, uh, with the, um, uh, increase to debt service and M and O flat, that's all that we're voting on. Is, is my amended, or, oh, wait, yeah. Oh, is my amended motion, do we, oh, do we have to, I think if amended?
Yes, we have to amend it, and then we have to vote on the motion.
I would let Mayor have to answer that.
Your amendment substantially changed the underlying motion, so if you approve your amended motion, you will not need to approve your original motion.
Okay, that's what I thought. Okay, thank you. Okay.
When I, when I call your name, please, um, vote. Uh, Councilmember Vondahar?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobson?
Yes.
Councilmember Wattley?
Yes.
Councilmember Single?
Yes.
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Mayor McCutcheon?
Yes.
Councilmember Betcher?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Seven.
Okay, thank you all. Okay, thank you, Shalay. Item number ten, city council and city manager reports, uh, we'll start with you, uh, Councilmember Jacobson.
Thank you, Mayor. I had a lovely sojourn to the Midwest where the weather was fabulous, so I was only able to do three things since the last meeting, one of which was an animal shelter tour, where we saw some of the new, uh, changes that have been made, and very, very much, uh, excited about that. Um, I'm going to leave the FIFA thing for someone else, because almost all of us were there, but I did spend a lot of time in H G A C, Houston Galveston Area Council, board meetings, et cetera, fighting for the money for us.
Thank you. Councilmember Vondahar?
Okay, so I will take you up on that FIFA thing. I attended the, uh, the, the press conference that the city had announcing our, uh, agreement with, uh, with the city of Houston and FIFA. Uh, what an exciting time for all of us. For those of you that may not follow soccer or FIFA, uh, this is a humongous event, probably the biggest event, sporting event in the world. So, uh, kudos to our team for getting that put together, and super excited for the possibilities for our city. Uh, I also, uh, took a tour of the animal shelter, very, very enlightening tour for me. Um, we've got a great team out there that's doing a lot of good things, and I think a couple of people have even mentioned it tonight, let's get that, uh, let's get that new shelter built. And then finally, I attended the, uh, Child Advocates of Fort Bend's Child Abuse Prevention Luncheon, um, a few days ago, and, uh, again, what a great, uh, organization we have right here in our city, and the work they do for, uh, the children in, in this, in this community is unbelievable, so it was great, great time.
Thank you, Councilmember Vondahar. Councilmember Betcher?
Thank you, Mayor. Sorry I couldn't be there tonight, I had a pre-planned vacation for months ago, but over the last two weeks, as, uh, Councilman Vondahar mentioned, we were at the animal shelter touring it, uh, kudos to the team for showing us the, the facilities, uh, they had showed us some of the, the, the dogs, and fortunately, we found out that they were able to be, uh, adopted out to a shelter, so that's good news, thankfully they wouldn't have to be euthanized. Uh, was also able to host an event at Smart Financial over the weekend, and had a great time, uh, you know, communicating with our marketing and communications team, and, and seeing what their priorities are and how we can align. So look forward to being a part of where we can, you know, best spend and make good use of the taxpayers' money as we look to find more efficiencies, and, you know, look forward to seeing the next proposed budget.
Thank you, Councilmember Betcher. Councilmember Miller?
Just want to second the FIFA event the staff put on, uh, that was well done, really enjoyed being there with that, and thank for, thanks to the side.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Single?
Thank you, Mayor. So I attended the tour of the animal shelter, which was very useful and very enlightening. I also hosted a space cowboy game for Sugarland Heritage Foundation, which was good fun. And also, I attended Community Wellness and Peace Event, which was ignited at the Sugarland Memorial Park by the heartfulness organization. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Wattley?
Thank you, Mayor. You and I hung out this week, I guess, uh, September eighth, uh, we went to the Bell Nap Brookside Association Meeting, and we had a good time, uh, talking about a lot of upcoming changes to that area, and then Friday, we went to the Boots and Paws Gala, where you were the main speaker, so you did a great job, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and I attended the Fort Bend County Infrastructure Conference with the Texas Land Commissioner Don Buckingham. I also attended the Sixth Annual Fort Bend Future Tech Conference, and Donna Chang, the CEO of Hope Biosciences, gave a fascinating talk on the research that they are doing there on stem cells. And also, I attended the soft opening of Velvet Taco, and Velvet Taco is where the Chick Fil A used to be, where, until, before they moved, and they have some really delicious tacos and bowls, and their guac is really good, too. So if you haven't checked them out, be sure to, to go, their, uh, grand opening was yesterday. So, uh, city manager?
Thank you, Mayor. This is our last meeting of this fiscal year, so I want to just thank all of staff and council for a great, uh, great fiscal year. Look forward to, uh, coming back with an amended budget in October, that will meet the policy directive of the council, and look forward to fiscal year twenty-twenty-six. Thank you.
Thank you.
I make a motion for adjourning the House.
Okay, we're adjourned, thank you.
Thank you, thank you all, thank you. Yes. Our checkbook's there, too. Yes, they listen. We cannot forget our.